I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Be seated, please. Uh, Jenny Reed, please. She's ill tonight, so Ms. Jerry Condon will be filling in, uh, for, uh, for the audience and the council's information, so we may move at a little bit slower pace than I normally do to help her get the minutes recorded. At this time, Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Alderman Fullerton, here. Alderman Toffrey.
Present.
Alderman Reed.
Here.
Alderman Bosley.
Here.
Alderman Henderson, here. Alderman Burke.
Here.
Note that all are present, so Quorum is present. At this time, a motion is ordered to approve the minutes of May the fourteenth.
I move that the minutes for May fourteenth be approved as mail. Second.
Motion by Alderman Henderson, second by Alderman Fullerton, to approve the minutes as mail. Any discussion? Here none, all is in favor, raise your hand. I see six for, none against, minutes are approved. You'll turn to item five. It's a city clerk's report. The first thing will be the financial, uh, statement, and we will look at general, uh, statements first. Under balance sheet, under current assets, we've got two-hundred-and-eighty thousand, nine-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and ten cents in the bank. Uh, expenses, revenues, uh, year-to-date are one million, forty-five thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents. Expenses by department, administrative, ninety-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-eight dollars and forty-two cents. Law enforcement, three-hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and seventeen cents. Fire department, hundred-and-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and eighteen cents. Sanitation, two-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty dollars and ninety-seven cents. Building codes, eighteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirteen dollars and twenty-five cents. District court, thirty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-six dollars and six cents. Minutes, building costs, eight thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and fifty-eight cents. Recreation, forty-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-eighteen dollars and two cents. Cultural center, twenty-one thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars and thirty-five cents. The armory expense, three thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars and thirty-seven cents. And other accounts, which includes airport, Nelson property, and some note payments, seventy thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars and sixty cents, for total expenditures, one million, thirty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. That leaves the cash flow positive of six thousand dollars, five-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and ninety-one cents. In the street fund, you have, uh, two-hundred-and-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars and a penny in cash accounts. Expend, uh, revenues, year-to-date, hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty dollars and ninety-eight cents. Expenses, year-to-date, hundred-and-forty-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventy dollars and forty-three cents, but cash flow negative of nine thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars and forty-five cents. If you look to the left, under profit and loss for this month, however, you did pick up, you were fifty-seven hundred dollars cash flow positive in the street account. And that's the first month this year that we've actually, uh, been in the black. Other accounts, you have two million, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand and nine dollars and fourteen cents in the bank. Revenues, one million, five-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. Expenditures, one million, six-hundred-and-ninety thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents, for cash flow negative of one-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty dollars and ninety cents. And, as you're aware, part of, most of that is the expenses with the emergency service center that you've had in the bank. They're not counted as income this year, you had them in the bank, you just spent them, so that makes it cash flow negative for this month. So we need a motion to approve the financial statement.
I move that we approve the financial statement as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the financial statement. Second, by all. Any discussion? Here none, all is in favor, raise your hand. I see six for, none against, thank you very much. All right, under city sales and use tax, you have, this month, you had an improvement, uh, sixty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars and nine cents versus sixty-five thousand, three-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and sixty-five cents last year at the same time period. And you had where it's spent. And county sales and use tax, you had the same thing, forty-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-seven dollars and eighty cents versus forty-three thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars and fifty-six cents for the same time period. So we've had an increase, this is, I believe, is the first month in the city sales, versus we've actually had an increase over the last year's same time period. And that requires no action on the council's part. Uh, we have the district, now we also have, uh, and I've left something out, the city treasurer's report, which is just for your information. District court clerk's report, this is also for your information. You have the March report and the April report, so she's caught up to date now. And Alderman, recognized for presenting one of the city council. If not, I recognize, excuse me.
I think, what, Goff, if you want to be recognized, you could give him a call.
He's, uh.
He's on the gym.
On the list.
Okay.
James Goff, recognized. Good man, come forth.
Good evening, everyone.
I would much rather be at home watching the news or something than I was for that luxury. Uh, my reason for being here is, uh, most of you, uh, councilmen know that, uh, back in the summer of two thousand and eleven, I was given a choice to have my house condemned, uh, tarred down myself. What I did was I hired somebody to tear it down. And, uh, after that, uh, I had some house blocks that were there. And, uh, they came up missing when I did some questioning about it. I was told that the city had somebody come in and cleaned the lot up. After I had tore the house down and, uh, had, you know, the debris moved, and had the yard mannequin. So, uh, I, uh, spoke to Mayor Bryan about it. And, uh, he told me what he would give me for the blocks, because he said that it was oversight on his part. But I wasn't satisfied with what he said. And on top of that, they dumped dirt gravel on my lot. And, uh, I had, I didn't feel like it was justified for them to do it, that's my problem there. And I had did what the city required. I had twenty-two house blocks, plus, I believe it was seven, those flat cushion blocks, what they sit on. And I was asking, uh, the mayor to reimburse me for it.
I mean, how much do you think there were?
He, how much do I think there were? Well, I, I went and got an estimate of what, uh, those house blocks cost. Not the one, the one that I had, was, uh, the old cement block. But these blocks that you have to find now, is, uh, I got an estimate on them for a hundred-and-forty dollars and forty-four cents. That's what I got an estimate of, uh, what I had originally asked, uh, the mayor, he disagreed with me and told me he'll get back with me. But he never did. I left several messages for him to call me, and he never called me. Otherwise, I wouldn't be here, because we could've worked something out.
So you're asking the city for a hundred-and-forty-some dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
What was that amount again, one time?
Here, uh, if the council want to see it.
Just, if you could just give me the amount.
That's, that's her block.
No. No.
Is that tall enough?
Totally.
Oh, okay.
Okay, okay.
I, I'm surprised the prices aren't that high.
Hundred and, uh.
Watch it there.
Hundred-and-forty dollars and forty-four cents.
Hundred-and-forty, forty-four.
How, how did we reimburse?
Second.
Mr. Coughlin.
Ma'am.
I say I move that we reimburse you for that amount.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Fullerton and a second by Alderman Burke to reimburse Mr. Goff and a hundred-and-forty-four dollars and forty-four cents for the mayor's oversight.
I have one to load up.
Hold up. Hold up, James.
Okay.
Any discussion? Here none, all is in favor, raise your hand. I see six for. All right, Mr. Goffin, you'll be reimbursed.
Okay. Now, I had to drive all the way from Ashdown to be here. And, uh, that, that caused me a pain to day. Now, I want to leave it up to the council, I'll leave that up to the council, if you all will do that for me, that's fine. If you don't, I just, so, I thank the council, we found, you can say I suffered.
Seeing no motion from the council, Mr. Goffin, thank you. Anything else? Thank you, sir. Mr. King.
Okay, as everyone knows, the fifty-sixth Annual Pink Tomato Festival has come and went. We approximated the crowd from, that came through Warren from June second through June ninth, to be approximately thirty thousand people. The festival committee would like to thank the mayor, the city council, for all they have done for us, Chief Peak and Police Department, Chief Edwards and the Fire Department, Tommy Adams and the Street Department, Mike May in Sanitation, and Steve Rand in Water, and, and Ms. Helen over there, who gets to field all the phone calls and sends us in the right direction. But a festival of this size and this magnitude could not go off without all of the assistance and help that is provided. Anytime I, we picked up the phone and needed the chief, or Mike, or anybody, they were happy to oblige, do whatever needed doing to make sure everything went off well, and we just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
And you did a wonderful job on the publicity too, David.
It was the whole committee, Miss Futter.
You really did, because, uh, I have never seen Channel Seven give us as much publicity as they did. The early morning show was just full of the tomatoes.
I don't feel like I care. Wonder if Mr. Holdup let me do this, under mayor's report, but Randy Peak and the police handled the crowd at the Pink Tomato Festival, which we've had estimates, anywhere from four thousand to six thousand to seven thousand people on Saturday night. And I don't, I couldn't count them, I couldn't figure it out, I'm not good at that. But they did a great job, and we didn't have a single incident, and I'm proud that, uh, I want to compliment him personally for what he did. Tommy Adams is not here tonight, I'm gonna give his report, but he and Mike May are to be commended for getting up at three o'clock in the morning, that most of us really wouldn't be willing to do, and cleaning the streets and making it look like you never had a festival. And Howard Edwards and what he does with washing down the streets and those kind of things. And, of course, as David said, if we didn't have Ms. Helen, none of this would happen.
Hold up, Chuck, yellow rays coming here. Trying to be on.
And then the other thing that I would like to mention is, if you've been looking, that the train is complete, and if you put this on your calendar Friday, at, uh, ten o'clock in the morning, we'll dedicate the restoration of the new train, and the city council will be recognized at that time. And any comments y'all want to make about the park, or whatever, we'll, you'll have a chance on the program. Uh, we will have the restoration expert here, James King, no relation to David, that did all the restoration work. And I'm trying to get the young man that painted it to break loose, his name was Luke Hollowell, and I'd like y'all to meet him. He'll be there. And then the Campbell Group, uh, that helped put the funding together, will also be there for that, and that's ten o'clock Friday morning. Anything else, under going back to public comment, or Alderman, or anything, y'all?
I think Mr. Bowie's daughter wanted to be recognized.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to be recognized, ma'am? Okay. Tell me your name.
My name is Mary Ann Bowie.
Mary Ann Bowie, thank you, sir. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here about property from last year being cleaned up, same as Mr. Goffin. My dead man was posted in the paper as one of the ones that had lots that wasn't clean. And he would get, he was given so many days a month to get his property cleaned. We cleaned the property, I say in about, I guess about three, four weeks. And none of the neighbors or anybody that live in our area, front or back, lots are cleaned. Our street still is like a wooded area, and my father's property is the one, only one that's been cleaned. And I don't feel it was fair for him to have to clean his property, nobody else cleaned their property.
Alderman, what's the address of your?
It's four oh five Berry Street, it's in South Uner.
Right somewhere. What's that trailer park that you were around a little?
Uh, it's a half, it's half blacktop now. They gave us a half, and give us a whole. So we got a half blacktop, it's half blacktop, sir. Unless you come from the other way, if you come from another end, then it's brown. But I did get half, so I'm pleased with that. But I'm, I'm here to speak about, you know, I don't feel it's fair that they put him under pressure. Ninety-six years old, he thinking he might go to jail if he didn't get his property cleaned. And we got it cleaned in three weeks, because that's the kind of pressure you put, you know, put, put out to get it cleaned, because he thought it was gonna be something done to him if he didn't get it cleaned. So it's clean, you come through there, it'll be the only property you see that's clean, and everything else is still growed up. And I don't feel it's fair to him.
I'd hate to be the individual that had to put Matt in jail.
Yeah.
In his, in his younger days, anyway.
Deal, now, grab your hat.
Okay. Uh, administrative and standing committee reports, we have Police Chief Randy Peak. Chief Peak, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. A couple things I'd like to report to the council on. Uh, as most of you know about the accident, uh, that Sergeant Miller had at Central, and, uh, Martin here a couple weeks ago on Saturday. I contacted, uh, the statement was made that the brakes failed on the car, and I contacted Chrysler. Went through River, uh, River Dodge, actually, in, uh, Monticello. We found out that there was a recall on that car, and we did act on that recall prior to the accident. Uh, and they did not have the parts to fix that car. But after contacting them, a representative with Chrysler contacted me out of California. When our insurance company was contacted and started fixing the car. I received a call from them this past Thursday to stop the work on the car. That they were sending, that representative Chrysler to Monticello to their dealership. And they wanted that car transported over there, so they could put it on, uh, a machine and scan the black box on it. Those cars have boxes on them similar to the aircraft, from what I understand. I'm going to that, because I don't want to talk about it, but evidently, they can be able to look at it and see if it's a possibility that was brake failure. And if it's something that warrants a major recall, it's a Chrysler. Again, we won't know anything until after Wednesday, and they told me that they could not guarantee me, they could say that's what caused the wreck, that this had anything to do with it. But at the same time, they are going, uh, the extra mile to check and make sure that our officers, and officers nationwide, and other individuals that's driving these Dodge Chargers, there's not a major problem. Because, uh, as I told him over there, if I don't, uh, go all the way with this, and I can go, if something happens and someone loses a life, uh, anyway, we're gonna, we're gonna go all the way with it. Chrysler is working, I got a letter here in hand from them, uh, and they're sending someone all the way from California to check on this thing, so I think they're doing their part. And then with, uh, on a, another note, uh, Saturday night, around twelve o'clock, after the festival ended and everybody started clearing out, I was going down Martin Street in my vehicle, in my police vehicle, and a large doe deer failed to yield to me. And, uh, we struck out there around the skating rink, and now my vehicle is also down, and I contacted the insurance company this morning. So accidents happen, uh, thank God, nobody was hurt in either one of them, major. Uh, we just had one gentleman that was hurt in the accident there, that Sergeant Miller was involved in, but I think he's okay. But we do have two vehicles now that are in the process of being repaired. So that's for your information, of course, uh, hopefully, uh, that you're liable we have no. The other things I would like to make you aware of, uh, the renovations, Police Department, they started today moving the, um, dispatch center, uh, from the old center to the new, uh, they should finish it up tomorrow. So that's gonna, uh, free up another room for them to work on, uh, they're making great progress. Uh, I feel like in another two to three weeks, it's gonna be getting very close. They should be finishing this thing up. I know they're, they're happy for it to come to an end, and we sure are. It's just hard to keep a business going, and that's where we are, and renovate a building. But they've been very cooperative, uh, and likewise, we cooperate with them. And, uh, another thing, uh, I want to express my appreciation, I don't have anybody here at, uh, corporate more, but I want, uh, and I've expressed myself to my officers, dispatchers, and everyone. These guys put in sixteen-plus hours, right in Saturday. And, uh, it was not as hot as it had been, but I know I was up there justifying me hours, they were, and they were younger than I am, but my feet hurt, still hurt. Uh, but we had, we had one little incident where a, uh, young man come walking through with a brown paper sack around a bottle, and we took it away from him, and told him to enjoy the festival, and he did so, and we left him with the problems. There was no arrests made, uh, and, and you know, it, it has something about Warren. People talk about what we don't have, when you get that many people confined in an area, like the square, the carnival area out here, and everybody gets along. We've got some pretty special products here. So, uh, anyway, that, that goes, that says a lot about our community, I think. All the officers, now we've been running backgrounds, uh, they haven't not been panning out. But I have one individual who I finally got to, uh, Delta Counseling for a psychological evaluation. All officers required by state law to have those. I have one officer, the background is completed, the psychological evaluation is completed. He is ready to go before the social service. I talked to, uh, the chairman, Miss Barnes, today, uh, and I'm running another background, and I will know more after, uh, in the morning. We have an appointment at ten o'clock to review a personnel file of a possible candidate, of a candidate to possibly, uh, will be outstanding for us, if, uh, what we find in personnel files, what we won't find. Uh, and we will be wrapping his background up, and he is a certified officer. So I'm hoping, uh, tomorrow, after, sometimes after ten o'clock in the morning, we'll know whether we'll have one or two candidates going before the social service, and that meeting will be held on either the twenty-first or the twenty-eighth, depending on what we find out in the morning. It's been a long, it's been a long time coming. It's just hard to get people to get passive right there, the people who want to, uh, go on.
Any questions for the chief? You got anything? Any questions for the chief? Alderman Toffrey?
Chief, do our office go through any cultural diversity training?
Do they do what now?
Go through any cultural diversity training?
They do, when they go through the academy. We have a racial profiling, uh, policy training every year, uh, whenever it's training available, and I have the time and the capability to send them, by all means, I'll send them anything I can. But, uh, they cover that extensively in the academy, and also, like I say, annually, uh, we renew or review our racial profiling policy.
When they're in, in a situation like that, that occurs, do they get into counseling after they, they've been into a racially hot, bitter, motivated situation?
I do not, since I've been there, I mean, I don't know of any major confrontations that we've had.
Well, you know, I was just concerned about the Planning Commission meeting, the last one that we had on some of the things, and we make some of our officers attend these type things, and sometimes they get concerned about what am I really doing? And, you know, sometimes, even me, I need a little counseling, I seek counseling on my own on certain situations, like to try to clear my head.
I know the officer you're talking about, and I spoke to him, spoke to me about it, and I spoke to him about it, uh, basically, uh, we discussed it to some degree. I told him, if at all possible, of course, we all have a job we have to do, that if all possible, that those situations arose, I would try to utilize other officers that have more confidence in that situation, if at all possible.
Okay.
I got one, a couple things, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I might, well, I guess I ask you, and you hear. Who assesses the area to see where there's need of, uh, speed signs?
That would, speed signs?
Speed signs.
That would probably come to the mayor's office, and then probably to your committee, probably, or where we need one.
I noticed that there's, there's a lot, and it's been, I've been along Etheridge Street, that's complaining up and down about speeding on Etheridge and in Bel Air, where cars are coming down, dragging down in Bel Air, when these kids out, and there's no signs or anything in, uh, in any of these areas.
Uh, I received a call from some lady, uh, I can't think of her name right now, uh, over there in that area the other day, requesting some speed bumps, and I told her she would need to, uh.
It's, it's nothing up there now that says anything about a speed sign, but people come down there like they're going.
No signs in Bel Air?
No signs in Bel Air, neither on Etheridge Street.
We can take care of that.
How do I go about also rescinding one sixty-six ordinance, a noise ordinance?
You would have to, uh, propose another ordinance to rescind it.
Because, uh, the noise is still parenting, and everybody's still right along with it. You know, Cincinnati having an, an ordinance, it's not gonna be enforced.
Is what that? Well, I, I would, I'm not sure I agree with that. David, haven't we had, uh, cases in district court where, uh, been convicted of that?
I mean, I'm not trying to pitch it, but almost every time we have district court, there's some noise violation, uh, you know, all the docking. A lot of times, the folks don't show up, and they're just fined, and that's the end of it. But when they do show up, they almost always plead guilty, and when they don't, we have trial, but, uh, obviously, that's up to the officers to write the citations. But my experience in district courts have been, apparently, writing citations, it'll be enforced.
So let the perler sites have it.
Well, I don't think that's the issue, Alderman Burke, I think, now, you know, we, yeah, yeah, how much?
What I'm saying is that you have some folks that want to go to work.
Those guys are.
You have people that want to go to work, and then they have to be exposed to bumping, bumping, all kind of noise, and I don't think it's right. And these people are bored out, and these, some are just riding down a road, and we leave them alone.
Well, somebody has to report it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, if there's no teeth in it, so why have?
But there is teeth in it, they do have to say fine.
Well, a lot of people don't want to get involved in that, you know, we've had that discussion.
It, it has to be reported before they can do anything of any.
Well, it's a face of the office, here's it, somebody at the office, if it's fixed, I'll be able to hear something.
I think we can go back and look and see, uh, we don't have it figured right in front of me now, but there's been a number of these citations in our office. Uh, loud music, uh, loud pipes, it covers a lot of two things, it's not just the music, uh, and, uh, we have had, uh, I, I'm not gonna tell you how many, I don't know, but it's not no, uh, three or four vibes, it's a. it's a, it's a pretty good sized number that we've written, a couple complaints from the neighbors primarily.
I got a comment there.
Alderman Mosley, recognized?
I don't think we need to rescind it, and I don't want to step on any toes, but maybe there's an enforcement issue that's being, because what gets me is the thumpity bump, but the thing that I can't, I have a hard time, or a bad time with, is the foul language in this music coming out of these vehicles. And so I, not to be ugly, but I don't think the, take the rescinding, but if we, maybe attorney can tell me, is there, can we raise the fines that might discourage, if it's a hundred dollars now, to get a ticketed for this loud music in a vehicle, that's where you're at the most.
Mr. Mayor?
And then if it's the trashy language, that ought to be a $200 fine, you know, that's, that's.
Alderman, excuse me, I'm about to promote David to the hall.
You're turning the change.
You recognize that? Respond to that. Two years ago, three years ago, when, when a lot of people were complaining to city council, I recall that the thing that we did to address that was encourage the district court judge, Bruce Anderson, to give the maximum amount of fine for that particular offense, and he has. And so when somebody gets cited for loud music or the noise ordinance, it's $265, it's not your typical low fine, I say low, $170 is what the lowest fine is, but it's the maximum.
That's good. And also, it also, it also covers not just music in cars, but also in houses, there's not a week goes by we don't get a call, well, not a week, not a couple of days goes by we don't get complaints from neighbors about neighborhood, loud music, people can't go slick, people can't do whatever, you know, I mean, live in peace and quiet, so, so speaking.
I have heard some terrible language coming out of cars driving down the street, but I can't get the license number, so how do you report somebody? If you don't have any way to identify them?
Well, we, we try to, when we hear it, we try to take action and enjoy our job. Now, we, I'll be honest with you, there are times, the first time we catch someone, I tell the officers, use officer discretion, you know, for someone that out of town, whatever the case might be, you know, talk to them and see how they act, if you want to give them a break the first time, I have no problem with that. But we've got some people who ride a ticket every week to, hey, this gentleman plays the obvious, that's his right.
If I may get off this and move back to emergency services, I was approached with some of the local merchants here, say, we, we promote Shop One, but they don't feel like they've been patronized fairly out of emergency, emergency simulation, because they said they supply paint, building materials, and other things that seem to have went to Drew County, they feel like they should have had an opportunity to, to supply those materials.
I agree with him, the contractor, that would be under David Simmons, he has the contract, and we did not put in, into the original contract that he had to purchase, where he had to purchase anything. I've heard that complaint, but then I noticed that it's done a lot of delivery coming from a particular lumber supplier in Warren, so, you know, I, I don't know, I just can't, I don't know how to respond to that joke, except to say that I've seen a lot of stuff being delivered by local delivery trucks, and I don't, I don't think it's as widespread as the person who is complaining to you has indicated, but we can sure look into it, and I'll try to get some numbers for you from the contractor. Thank you, well, Alderman Fullerton, you're recognized.
So, so we finished with that deal?
I suppose ordinance 166 up to you, Alderman Burke, if you want to draft an ordinance to do away with the sound ordinance, I think you're wrong, but you're welcome to do whatever you want.
I mean, I, I hate to say that, but, you know, if it's not gonna be enforced as it should be, as far as respecting the taxpayers of Warren, then I just got a problem with it, and we'll move on, let the beat go on, but I'll, I'll, I'll have something maybe by next month, if we don't do anything. And like I said, enforcement is the thing, like I said, you go in some place, you're not going to hear no noise. It all depends on the intellect of your folks that you have allowed this.
So you're gonna run these people out of town, is that the deal?
Well, I mean.
Because they have a low intellect, or I mean, what's the?
I can't deal with, okay? You come in and act like a human being, and I do, you don't act a human being, I treat you like you're a, like what you are. Thank you, sir, go ahead.
Excuse me, sir.
The police committee has not made it. Thank you for your report, and I'm glad you got some officers coming, that's wonderful.
Thank you, sir.
Let me Thomas won't get your vehicle, man. I can get somebody.
Our chief is. You have your, his monthly report in your hand.
I'd like to say thank y'all, our firemen for participating, made it this, and helping people in the need of help.
And I heard that all of you love fire trucks.
They do, they love them. We don't have enough room for all of them. They ride every day, you had out there for a ride.
Any question about your report? Alderman Reek, you're recognized?
Don't have any business from the fire committee, I do want to make a note, Mayor, though, we did miss one out on my home, agenda about to travel.
I did. Okay. Is that under 7B?
Yes.
I sure did. Alderman Reek is recognized. Hold it, let me get rid of Harrod.
No business for the fire committee.
Your, your excuse, sir. Your excuse, sir. Now, we'll go back to 7B, and thank you for finding us, Alderman Reek is recognized.
Personnel Policy Committee did meet this afternoon with all, all members present. Purpose was to look at a employee travel policy, which would set out the guidelines for reimbursements and things, if we did have travel, and we looked at it, and the, our recommendation to the council is that they adopt the policy that you have a copy of there.
That's a committee recommendation, and it requires no second? Any discussion? Here none, all is in favor of adopting the travel policy as presented, with the one change? It doesn't require a second?
Oh, it doesn't?
No, it's a, it's a committee recommendation.
Okay. Well, it moves.
So, there you go, we need to now, I'm calling for both, all is in favor of adopting the policy, raise your hand. I see six, four, none, yes, thank you, Alderman Reek. Anything else, sir?
No focus.
All right. Now, going back down to eight, sanitation manager Mike May. You have the sanitation committee, I mean, you should have a sanitation report in your packet, and income was higher than expenses, which is a good thing. And any questions for the sanitation manager? If not, Alderman Mosley is recognized.
The sanitation committee had some business this month, Mayor.
All right, there is a question, Alderman, tell for it.
Couple of questions. I was approached by a group of people that wanted to know what determined a lot cleanup? Because they said that on the last meeting that I missed, that we stated that we was doing the, the house turned out in the lot cleanup that we was paying for, and they had pictures of several lots, it had just been the house removed, and none of the other outer exterior structures were cleaned, as long with the shrubs and other metal materials. As on Rock Street, I think that was Marvin Neil, used to live at, right there, his folk?
Harvard Hills.
Yes, right there, like that, it was just, went up in there, the house was tore down, and all the exterior lot was left there with the shrubs and materials and everything, and like in Goat Neck, right there on the corner of Beaver and Myrtle, where they tore the house down, left the shrubs, and then a couple of outhouses, and they feel like that they was made to move the, the bricks, shrubs, and any other exterior things there, and they just want to know why some people get a chance to clean a lot one way, and don't get a chance to clean it the other way.
Good question.
I think we went down through this some months ago, in the termination.
We adopted a set of guidelines that the people that work for us, that actually clean the properties, go by, one of the guidelines is strictly for structures, and what that basically tells, whoever we hire, we as in the city, whoever the city hires to remove a structure, we take the structure completely down, including any and all footings, and if there is a deficit of dirt where the structure was, we put field dirt in to bring it up to grade, so it doesn't stand hold water and cause mosquito problems, things like that. On the other hand, that's strictly for structural removal. On the other hand, the lot plane itself is a different entity, it's covered by different ordinance, and some of these structures were condemned structures only, and not the lot itself, and others were, were structure and lot. And more than likely, the ones that you're referring to were condemned by the city council as a structure only, and I would have to go back and look at those records. Typically, typically, it's gonna be two different people that do. The structure clearly takes heavy equipment, and the lot would take somebody that's in yard work or cleaning and different things like that, so I would have to go back and look at the two instances that you talked about, and see whether it was just a lot that was condemned, or the lot in the structure, or vice versa, and I'll get your answer next time.
Okay, well, how do we determine who does the work?
It's done by a bid. We've had several different entities that have expressed interest in removing the houses, and I've tried to contact those entities every time that we have structures to be removed, and it's done by a bid process. Several entities have expressed interest in removing properties, cleaning houses, and when I've let them know that we're actually have a list, they've come by and gotten a list, but never have gotten prices back to me on these. We, we usually have three to four contractors that give us prices.
You have it times in the paper, or you just have it in your office?
I just have it in my office.
We don't go through a formal bid process on this, we mainly is trying to find somebody willing to do it that has time, that has a trackhold available. In this particular case, Mills was the only one that I could, you know, that we got that was ready and willing to do it right then, so we turned him loose on him, and he does a real good job on structures, like you say, then, of course, if you want to hire him to clean the whole lot and dig up all the trees, we'll get after that, too. Lot cleanup sure is a contentious issue as well.
Well, there's a difference, there's a difference between value added stuff like trees, tree is a value added part of property, for shrubs and bushes, things like that or not. If you cut a tree off somebody's property, you're taking value added off, and I would think that you could have to compensate for that somewhere or other, so we try to stay away from the trees. Now bushes and shrubs, one of the lots you're talking about has got Nandina bushes growing up, head high, and, yeah, it can stand another good cleaning with somebody that was equipped to take care of that.
Talking value added, they also come to me, a person also come to me concerned about value, when we, I think, I don't remember which property it was I told them I'd check. On the Walker property, is that the property we took over on Center Street to do the waiting pool, the little kiddie pool deal thing?
Are you talking about the one the state gave us?
Yeah.
The, the one that church wanted to purchase?
I don't know, just, it was a building right, just come, it was a building right there. Yeah.
That's it.
They was wondering why did, they weren't able to get the, the materials off of it, and why did we give them to our city employees and other people when they could have recused it themselves?
There were several people that came by and requested different materials off of it, and I told them that the contractor was gonna remove the building in two weeks, and as they came in, I, I gave them permission to get what they wanted off the building, and I actually had another entity that wanted to get the lumber off of it after the tin was removed, and I told him he had a week to do it, and he said, no problem, he would get it, and he didn't do it, and when the contractor came in to tear the building down, he showed up and wanted to get the lumber, and it was too late, and I mean, so the building came down.
Yes, some, some of people connected to the owners were wondering why they wasn't able to have that same opportunity, because they said it was, the tin and stuff was kind of valuable.
Well, to my knowledge, the owner was the state of Arkansas, I don't know who was prior owner.
The state of Arkansas owned that building, did it to us?
I, I agree, but, you know, always things come up in these situations lately, and I was just thinking in my mind about the chief, when we'd ask him about giving cards to somebody, and he said it was, who was at libel for, liability, and the best thing was to, to auction them, I just wanted to, we have cross-the-board policy on dispersion of city property, like the chief came up with, because I didn't have an answer for him.
Not that I know of.
Not on tin from old buildings?
Yeah, the building was basically, Mr. Mills is when he agreed to tear it down for a set price, so, but we had expressed interest in some of the value of the building, and I tried to give it to whoever expressed interest on a first kind of first serve basis, and, you know, because you're getting a lot of tussles about, and there was a little discrepancy at the start of that between two individuals, and I straightened it out and told them, look, I told you, you can have it first, and then you can have it second, and so that's the way it went, and everything went pretty smooth on them.
I, I thought that property belonged to Nancy Benson, Nancy Walker Benson, I, I didn't realize that it come to the, to the state.
Well, that's him, the state had it long.
It did when we voted on it to do it, for that little.
Turned it back to us, but it's not.
For the little water park, you know, like I said, when we did that, it's a bit for anything else.
That's right behind the.
It's right behind the pool, we're gonna try to turn it in and try to build at some point in time a water feature on it.
You remember that?
We hadn't found any grimp, and that's kind of problem we bumped into, that was the reason for getting the problem, plus clean it up where you straighten out the neighborhood, it's been vacant forever.
Ms. Wise has an ego eye on all that right there.
Yes, sir.
She gets me every chance she gets.
Juice. Anything else?
About, yeah, I think all of us about the water.
Street foreman Tommy Adams report, he lifted this list, he prepared the streets for paving, he's in that process, he's mowed and cleaned. He mowed and cleaned around festival areas, he helped set up for the festival with the help of the chamber crew, set up bleachers and stages, and then he got up at three in the morning and helped Mike supervise the cleanup crew on Saturday morning and Sunday morning. He had a personal thing he had to attend to. And the street committee chairman...
Question, if you don't mind.
Oh, excuse me.
I had, also had a question about the, the four-way stop on sixty-three B on Main Street there, and I told him, as far as I knew, and I, I asked you, I thought that was the state...
That is a state issue.
I just wanted to clarify that for them, that we wasn't one...
Mr. Quimby.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, Mr. Quimby, I put you on TV.
Just wanted to make, I wanted to commend, and I found out that Mike and Tommy and their crews were up here like three-thirty in the morning. When I left up here after the fireworks that night, who could tell how many, how much litter was left there? And I was up through town at ten-thirty the next morning. He said, did they have a festival up here last night?
Only the stage was left.
I mean, they did a heck of a good cleaning.
Every year.
Yeah, they did.
Street committee chairman Alderman Burks is recognized.
We have bids on street striping, and we have two bids on those, and the lowest bid was super striped parking lot specialty out of Lake Dutch. An amount of five thousand two hundred forty-four dollars and fifty cents. We accept that bid.
We have a motion to accept the bid of super striped, fifty-two hundred forty-four dollars and fifty cents. There's a second, by Alderman Tollfree.
Okay.
Any discussion? Here none, all those, oops, I see discussion.
We have one question. Have we ever used them before?
Yes. Seems like every year they get the bid. Arkansas land marketing got it last year. And we're high this year. And her work is finest, Janine Stewart out of Lake Village. Any other discussion? Here none, all is ready. Both, all those in favor, raise your hand. I see six, four, none against Alderman Burks.
And the next item is street paving. We had three beds, and Riley paving, Doug Stevens, and Redstone, and the all guests of the city. And the ballpark, Riley came up with a hundred, a thousand dollars, a hundred dollars per ton, I'm sorry, and that's the lowest bid versus a hundred and six dollars, a hundred and five dollars a ton, so go with the lowest bid of a hundred dollars per ton.
Recommendation is to accept the low bid of Riley of a hundred dollars?
Yes.
Second by Alderman Tollfree. Any discussion? The only discussion I have is, when I started as mayor, it was fifty-two dollars a ton eight years ago. Last year it was ninety-two dollars. So it's gone up exponentially. All those in favor of accepting the motion, raise your hand. I see six, four, none against Alderman Burks. Anything else?
That's all I have, but again, Mr. Mayor, I, I ask that you look into assessing of signs, street signs, and whatever we can do to slow down some of these folks there. I'm going to hurt somebody out there.
On Bel Air?
And, and...
Under...
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
We didn't have a building report.
You did, Mike May was...
We got the sanitation report, but we didn't have...
Oh, there's no building report in your packet?
Uh-huh.
Oh, there is.
It's, it's usually ready into the minute.
Okay, you have in your packet a building report. You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Full. It seems I'm bouncing all over this agenda, and I appreciate the council's patience. Under community and economic development, with the council's approval, I will appoint Alderman Tollfree to attend a Cornerstone Coalition Economic Development Conference on behalf of the city. The city needs a representative of this, and it'll be in Monticello on June twentieth. And with the council's permission, we will ask Alderman Tollfree, if he will, to represent us at this deal. They're going to have a, it's going to be a pretty broad-based meeting, it's going to be talking about community and economic development grants, and some state incentives, and one of the main issues will be broadband, and I think Mr. Alderman Tollfree is on the Bradley County portion of the Cornerstone Coalition. So if you will, Joel, will you represent us?
You said, do you have your graphics and grants?
Well, that will have some grants information available for economic development type activities, and a lot of it deals with state incentives, and I'd like Alderman Tollfree to kind of bring that back. They're going to have Sam Walls there, and who's going to be the keynote speaker, who's with Arkansas Capital, and then they're going to have Basil Julian, who is the head of Arkansas Industrial, the grant division, and both of those should be really informed.
I thought all that kind of was out since, you know, they all was trying to get...
Since Mr. Boozman took the money with him?
Yeah.
But it's not easy.
Okay, well, I, no, I didn't know that.
Thank you, Alderman Burks.
It's going to also affect the education side, too, the broadband access, you know. Maybe in the future, maybe some lawsuits involved in it also, for rural communities, the way I see it, because we won't be have access to an equal education that the metropolitan areas have, because they have the access to the broadband. And I seen where in northeast Arkansas, they got a grant for distance learning, that they spread it out to different schools on that deal, you know, it's kind of hard for us to get the chemistry and physics and those type teachers to do distance learning. If we had access to the broadband, we could give our kids a decent education also.
Oh, wait till Mr. Tough cut, he'll be all right.
Just throwing it out there.
Anything else, Alderman Tollfree?
That'll be all.
All right. Ways and Means, Alderman Henderson?
We don't have any business. We will probably meet sometime next month.
Reports and boards, item nine, you have the planning commission report. You have their minutes. Under aviation, you have their minutes. On the twenty-sixth of this month, there will be a bid opening at eleven o'clock in the morning for utilization of a four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant for finishing out the taxiway. You remember you did that? You did the first half of the taxiway under, and this is an FFA grant, federal, FAA grant, federal aviation grant. It's a ninety-ten grant, nine percent paid by the feds, ten percent by the Arkansas Aviation Department. But there'll be a bid letting, and then the bids will come before the city council provided they meet the specs and, or within the money for your approval at the August meeting, excuse me, at the July meeting. You have water and sewer commission report, and you do have a certification of bids that were accepted for generator for the water well. And after a lot of discussion last month, I said that y'all didn't have to approve this because the water department approved this second, this bid, but I talked to the grant people, which is Arkansas Industrial Development Commission, AIDC, and they say it's necessary that we, as a council, accept, also accept this bid, or approve the water department accepting this bid. So a motion's in order to accept the hobby electric bid, fifty-three for right now. Motion in the second. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor, raise your hand. I see six, four, none against. Under parks and ref, they had a ballgame, a tournament for eight and under and ten and under. Fordice came over and loaned the fence, and we had an extra one that we used to make sure that three fields could be utilized, and they had terrific attendance. I'm thinking fourteen to sixteen teams played, so this turned out real well. Under housing authority, no meeting, cultural center, you have the report. Unfinished, council will get the unfinished business, public statements. Under new business, I don't have anything announced. Municipal league, June twentieth to the twenty-second, how many council persons are going to that?
Where will you be at?
Hot Springs.
Oh, I think, whatever. Yeah, Hot Springs?
Yes, sir. Need a motion to pay the bill.
Some who?
Motion by...
Second.
Motion by Tollfree, second by Henderson, to pay the bill.
You said twenty?
Yes, sir.
Wednesday through Friday.
Wednesday through Friday. Wednesday's kind of preliminary, so I hope Alderman Tollfree will have time to go.
It don't start till, they're even.
There's been a motion in the second to pay the bills. Any discussion? Here none, all in favor, raise your hand. I see six, four, none against. The meeting is July Monday the ninth, and then we need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Burks, second by Alderman Tollfree, and all those in favor, stand.
You use the bill, you have on the...
I know. We're going to go this way.
I thought you buzzed you, but...